We have Mr. Tipton. Shaun, if you'll get up the podium, please. We have Shaun Tipton here who will be representing the Ministerial Association. Any invocation that may be offered before the official start of the meeting of the county commissioners shall be the voluntary offering of a private citizen to and for the benefit of the county commissioners. The views or beliefs expressed by the invocation speaker have not been previously reviewed or approved by the county commissioners and do not necessarily represent religious beliefs or view of the county commissioners in part or as a whole. No member of the community is required to attend or participate in the invocation. And such decision will have no impact on their right to actively -- I can't talk today -- actively participate in the business of the county commissioners.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for today and God today. I especially thank you for the institution of government and the government of this great country, the democracy that we have. We are so thankful for our elected officials and the decisions that they make that impact us. God, I ask that you be with them as they make decisions that ultimately will have impact on countless people in this county. I ask that you just make decisions that are for the benefit of the people and that they would award the citizens that are doing well and that they would hold the citizens accountable that are acting against the law. I thank you for each individual that has served and you know the needs that they have in their life. I ask that you be with each individual person and meet those needs that they have and help them to know that you're the God of comfort and peace. And it's in your Son Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you, Shaun.
Call this meeting of county commissioners to order. If you have cell phones, please turn them off. We stand for the pride of the allegiance.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That would look so bad.
Sheriff Woffler?
I have two things. The first is a 144 for an open jail officer position. The new jail officer will be Joshua Marshall, local resident. He actually started last week. So, very eager young man. After we hired him, said, "You need to put in your two weeks at your job." He said, "I can come right back in and start working tonight if you need me to." So, I took that as a good sign, so we'll see, but good start. Just need approval to hire him even though he started. We didn't mean to do that.
Motion to approve the 144 is hard. Second?
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you. Second thing is our medical contract. We last year had got very close to signing a contract with quality correctional care. Ended up being a money issue. We were going to be a little short. I believe, I know nothing's approved and finalized yet, but the council is on board with us giving us the money to do that contract now. So, that's just a basic overview of what services they provide. Lisa Scroggins is the director for quality correctional care. I've reached out to her to try to set up maybe a special meeting with you guys if you guys do have questions and she can present a contract to you guys. I won't be here at the September 19 meeting. I'll be at a training, so it'll probably be the first meeting in October if you guys are on board, but hopefully we can have a meeting in between those two times so you guys can ask any questions you need to and she can answer those more in depth than I can.
Sheriff, I was just coming on board when you were discussing this a little bit. Refresh my memory, they're going to employ all of your current?
Yeah, all the current -- oh, I'm sorry.
Health care employees?
Yes, they will offer them all positions. One of them already works for them at other jails as well, so they will offer them all. Nothing will change other than they will just take over. They will take care of our billing and they also offer a ton more services. A big benefit to us is they try to handle everything in-house. So, instead of sending -- we're running daily to the hospital, to the different doctor, eye doctor, things like that, dentist. They don't offer the dental services per se, but they handle all that stuff in-house. They try to do x-rays there, they do any consultations there, they do every two weeks mental health evaluations, which is something very big for us. They also take care of the HIP 2.0 signups for us. They take care of billing for us, which is going to be a big benefit. They're in 46 other counties, so this is what they do. And to me, it's a layer of protection for the county and for the sheriff's department to have somebody running our medical other than the way we're doing it, so.
Your personnel that does the billing, is that part of your nursing staff or?
No, it's actually our jail secretary Nancy Bullander.
Will that free?
I have some plans for her for that. She has done an absolutely phenomenal job since taking over. I think Nancy's been in five or six months. She just walked in yesterday and said, "Hey, I just got a check from DSC for $63,000 from stuff she's just went back over bills and found that we didn't -- she's done a phenomenal job." So, Nancy's a taskmaster, so anything I give her, there are a few ideas I have to fill in some of that time with her, so I don't think you can give her enough work. She likes it, so yeah, we'll definitely use her for a few other things once that happens, so.
Is she the only one outside the nursing staff that actually done anything with healthcare?
Well, Beth King as well does some of the billing and helps with some of that, but...
But your jailers, your jail officers?
No, that is one thing, I'm glad you brought that up. One thing that they will do is they pass meds. The nursing staff will pass meds under quality correctional care where now the jail officers do some of that and they're not super comfortable doing that. And just because of the way things are staffed and the way things are done, they will take care of that.
So, that's going to free up some of their time as well?
Not a lot.
To be jail officer?
Yes, yes, yeah, it will help some, yes, yes. Not a significant amount, but it will.
Yeah, it'll help some over there, okay.
Yeah, so I will...
This is to take effect January 1?
Yes.
This contract will?
Yes. And it's a one-year. She'd like for us to do a two-year contract. My term ends at the end of next year, so whether it's me or someone else can choose to extend that contract past that point. I know you guys will actually sign it, but I will ask her to do that just in the event that there is a new sheriff after the end of the year and he wants to, he or she wants to do a new contract, that they can do so. So, as long as you guys are comfortable with that, but I would try to extend that courtesy to whoever could be in that position. If they don't like quality correctional, then they may not want to move forward with it, but obviously it's a contract with you guys.
I guess my only concern is continuity. I mean, we've got to try to create some continuity.
I agree, I agree. It's bad time. I wish we'd got it done last year so we could have had two years with it and see if we liked it or not, but I just, I worry that the next person coming in may not want it per se.
Yeah, but wouldn't it be better for the county? If it's better for the county, I'd say go ahead and do it.
I think so. And that's something we'll talk to Lisa in that meeting about. She extended that courtesy when I talked to her before to try to do a two-year or a one-year contract as opposed to the two, but ultimately it's your guys' decision. I just...
Will she do more than the two?
Oh, I would assume so.
And lock-in prices or?
I'll leave that for her to answer, but I would hope so, yeah, yeah. But I think we'll see some savings even with how our people have handled billing. I think this is what they do. She came in before and took copies of two bills that we had, went through everything and not these places, I mean, it's no secret, they're from hospitals, they overcharge out the wazoo. And she went through and found about $3,000 in overcharging that they would have got reduced. That was off two bills. So, I would think we'll see a savings. That's a question also for her that popped up with us is when we do save money, does it still stay at that amount or what? So, there's a lot of questions that we'll all think of between now and then and I'll get that set up with her. And I've talked to several other sheriffs who are really happy with them. State Jones Specter recommended we go, there's two companies really in the state that do it and he recommended us going with one of the two as part of the...
Solution to our problem.
Solution, there you go.
How many surrounding counties are?
Henry and Franklin I know for sure. I'm not sure if Wayne County does or not, but Franklin, I talked to Sheriff Murphy. He spoke very glowingly about them and talked to sheriff up in Henry County. He was pretty happy with them too, so I mean, they're in 46.
I was very impressed with everything she had to say last year when she was here and it's definitely something we need. We'll cover some bases that we're not able to do in-house right now.
And that's not a knock at all to our nursing staff. They do a great job. It's just, I'm not a nurse or a doctor, so you know, and I'm overseeing it now. I would rather somebody with that expertise. I'm not afraid to delegate or if I don't know something, have somebody that knows it better than I do.
Well, it sounds to me that we're not knocking our current program, we're just adding to it.
Yeah, exactly, enhancing it.
We have a very, a large loss in the mental health capabilities and that's something that they cover, which we really need.
Yeah, absolutely, yep.
They are in Wayne County.
Yeah, okay, they are, so. I hadn't talked to Sheriff Cap about that, but yeah, he's kind of the gold standard when it comes to sheriffs, so if they have them, I'd say that's probably a good thing. I'll set that meeting up. I'll reach out to you guys in my chance. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I.D. Director, Mr. King?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
I put my report in each of your boxes, kind of shows what was going on for the month as far as that goes. Ninety-four thousand five hundred and eighty emails last month, shows how busy our email server was. What made that more complicated was that last month from pretty much beginning of August up through about the second or third week of August, I don't know why we were chosen, but some hacker decided to try a brute force attack against our email server. That added to our ticket numbers because people were getting locked out of their emails. And what happens is our server, if you log in incorrect password five times, it locks your account for an hour or IT, we can go in and manually unlock it. But this happened to Jane a number of times. Somebody would be in their email, that hacker would try it again and it would lock their account and effectively knocks you out of your email. You're no longer able to get in. One day, we had over 3,800 bad email login attempts. Now, to mitigate that a little bit, 1,700 of them were Joey's phone asking because he needed to change his password, but it was still 2,100 attempts from China, Russia, Bulgaria, Romania. So, that has seemed to have stopped, but it could very well come back. Like I said, I have no idea why they were attempting to hit us. It wasn't any one account. One day, it was 120 for the assessor and 70 for the auditor and 20 for me and a couple other accounts. I mean, there was no one account that was being targeted. So, I think they were just trying to get into our server to use it to send out spam mail, not trying to hack into it, get information, which if they were trying to do that, I would think that they would be focusing on one account. You know, if they thought the auditor had information that they wanted, they would focus on the auditor's email, not just all the emails they could get access to. For the month, we had a total of 246 tickets, 192 of which were for the county. I've got a number of research projects going on. One of those is still being an automated off-site backup. I got another quote from another company. It was still in the $10,000 to $12,000 range, so I'm seeing what I can find and asking around and seeing what options we've gotten. So far, all the quotes that I've gotten have been in that range, so I'm hoping I can find one cheaper, but I'm not anticipating it at this point after talking to three or four different companies and getting the same kind of numbers.
Is that a yearly expense?
Yeah.
That 10?
Yeah. Right now, what I'm doing is manually making a backup and stashing it offsite, but I only do that about every month for all of the data. But I do have a reciprocal backup going on between here and corrections. So, there is at least something, you know, our stuff here backs up the correction, corrections backs up to here, so if a fire or something happened, you know, burned down this building, we still have the backup at the other building that's more current. And then, like I said, I'm doing a manual backup every three to four weeks and taking it offsite and then just keeping that up to date, so. We're still working on cleaning out all the old electronics. We have one of the judge's consoles set up for the Judge Edition for Odyssey, for Judge Freed. Gives him a big touchscreen that lays on his desk so he can just load up files and stuff. I'm waiting for a piece of furniture to come in for Judge Branson to better, a little side table because his bench is not as big as Judge Freed's is sitting in superior. And I finally have one thing to get approval for. I want to order two scanners for the clerk's office. I got two quotes. The winning quote was from PCMG for $889.99. He basically beat the other vendor by a penny on each one of them, so it's a total of 177998. I believe that will be coming out of the child support funds because the scanners are being used for child support issues, so just need to get approval on that so I can get those ordered.
Either company preferable or?
Yeah, we worked with both of them before.
I make motion that we approve the 177996, two scanners. Second?
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Yeah, I looked on Amazon, one of those scanners, regular retail, was like 960 bucks, so we are getting a good bit off the regular. So, that's it for me.
Thank you very much, sir.
Is it possible to create our own off-site auto backup? I mean...
I've looked at it like, over at TV3, we got a device called the Synology Network Attached Storage. It holds about, I think we've got eight or 10 terabytes worth of storage in it. In theory, we could put something like that at City Hall or TV3 or the park, wherever we have another connection. The problem is we would have to get that connection up significantly, I think, to make it work very quickly. The way a lot of these work, and I'd have to find the software that would do it, but it takes one start and backup and that takes a significant amount of time. So, you've got, I think our one 2.2 server has well over a million files on it. That's the file server that everybody kind of shares and prosecutor puts stuff on there, probation puts stuff on there. So, it would take that, first backup takes a little bit longer. And then what it does is it only backs up files that are added or changed. So, if you update a file, it saves that new file, but it doesn't save all the other 900,000 that didn't change. So, if I can find a piece of software that will do that reliably for us, then yes, it's possible, but I want to say that piece of equipment, Synology, is probably with enough drives to really hold everything and a good backup. We're probably looking at $1,200 to $2,000 to up the internet connections both places to make it significant to be able to pass the data back and forth well, probably looking at an additional $200 or $300 a month. So, it's a matter of finding that software. It's why I'm trying to research what options we've got. Rush County contracts with a guy named Gary King. I can't remember the name of his company. I remember his name because it's King, so.
How do you remember that?
I've talked to him. He was one of the ones that gave me a quote of like $10,000 to $12,000. That's who they contract with. One of the other advantages to those companies is they have a quick recovery time. So, if we had a problem, it's, you know, you call them, they help you and they get things back up and running, unlike if we had to do it manually, you know? If I had to rebuild the system completely on this end and then get the data back in and then get all the settings back in, it's going to take a lot longer. So, part of the point of those services is to have a quick recovery time so that you're not down for however long, so.
Just sounds like a lot of money every year.
It does, but...
Just to back up something, just...
Well, yeah, but until you start looking at what the significance of that data is.
Well, I realize that.
With our Lao system, for example, it gets backed up to Lao and I also have an internal backup that gets done. So, it's getting backed up three times each day. So, that's kind of what we're looking at. If we had a major crash here, you know, we lost all the data for some reason, we could call Lao and say, "Hey, can I have the backup from yesterday?" And they could give that to us. Yeah, we'd have to rebuild a day like Franklin County did after they had a database corruption, but you're not talking rebuilding everything. You're not talking losing everything. So, that's the idea, is that you have a quick way to repair things. So, yeah, it is a lot of, it does sound like a lot of money, but on the flip side, how much is it to repair, to replace all that manually if you lose everything?
Well, and yes, I agree with that. I think we need an off-site backup, whether it's our own in-house or we contract with somebody. I think we do need that.
Yeah, we definitely need it. It's just a matter, I mean...
But I thought, you know, if we were talking about 20 or 30, $40,000 to create our own...
Well, it also...
That's a one-time fee and...
You have to realize how much data we're talking to. I mean, $10,000 to $12,000 sounds like a lot, but we're not backing up just a couple gigabytes. We've got two or three terabytes worth of data that would need to be backed up regularly. And that's not a huge amount of data when you think about it in the scheme of things necessarily, but I mean, you're not talking backing up your iCloud library where it's only 10 gigabytes and you're not thinking about it being very much. You're talking quite a bit of information that's fairly important, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Richard, did you have something for us today?
I was just going to tell you what was going on. That's about it.
Well, we'll let you do that and you haven't requested to be on the agenda, but since you're here, we'll ask you some questions.
Okay. Well, we moved everything from the north over in Waterloo on the chips hill. We've got 12 miles yet to do and then make it to 60, so. We did line up a creek down there, 150 down there by David Cox's. There's two tank cars down there in the water. It was swirling around in there and not hitting the tank cars where it's way it was supposed to and it's bringing up blow holes and stuff. I told Warren about it. Told him we fixed it and everything, so we took care of that. I get with Andy Thursday. He's got a couple of things he wants me to look at and I had a couple of things I wanted him to look at on that fence and stuff, so. I think that's about it, I reckon. Got a guy retired. I had to post his job this morning. Bob Joe Lake's retired, so I posted it for three days in-house operator because he's a truck driver and operator. If he puts down for it, then I got to post that for three days and we'll just go from there. Kind of got a guy in mind. He's worked part-time for the last five years down there. He's got his CDLs and everything, but I'll have to wait and see how things work out with the in-house, so I'll bring it up the next time.
So, you'll be asking for a 144?
I reckon.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Jenna Turner?
Good morning.
Good morning, Jenna.
I was here, last time I was here, I was asking for a contract agreement to be signed for a trial basis to look at a electronic monitoring system to be used with juveniles. We liked the program. I was on house arrest for a night and I get no reception at my house, so we tested it out, went all over the county to see whether it would work or not, and it really does. My intent for doing this is that to save money on detention costs that comes out of County General. I'm actually on the agenda tonight for the county council to ask for additional money to cover possible detention costs for the rest of the year. I was budgeted $60,000 and approximately at this point, we're at $52,000, I want to say, a little over that. It's extremely difficult to guess on juvenile detention. It can be, we could go months without any. We could have a month where we have three or four at one time, they're all arrested together. Just depends on the situation. And I'm trying to get moved to electronic monitor just for those kids that would qualify for that. That's not to say we wouldn't have kids in secure detention. And looking back over the year, when we have kids in detention, usually the cost is maybe one child, but they're in there for 30, 60 days. Sometimes it's waiting for placement. Sometimes it's just to, for their safety or community safety, they cannot go home. So, we've been watching that closely. But this company, we forwarded the contract to Colin. I don't know if you had a chance to review that? And they would only charge $3.75 a day for the monitoring and that's, it monitors by satellite every five minutes where the location is. And that's opposed to right now what we pay for the juveniles with community corrections. There's a $50 hookup fee and then $15 a day for that. So, for us, it's a big reduction because we're working directly with the agency. And also with that, our juvenile probation officer is unfortunately, probably for him, is on call 24/7. When there's an alert that they're out of the area, they've tampered with the equipment, the juvenile probation officer is going to know immediately. He's going to know what's going on with that case and know the severity of it or what we need to do or expect a call from the police. So, it would improve our efficiency as well with the juveniles. So, basically, I was seeing if there were any questions and whether we could get a go-ahead for going ahead and getting, signing this contract for a year to try to reduce the cost and use that more.
Jenna, you said that this would reduce the amount of juveniles that will be housed?
Insecure detention.
Insecure detention. Do you have a percentage of the past year, for instance, what, in the last 12 months, would 50% of those qualify for this or 20%?
Not necessarily. I don't know that it would be that high. However, I do believe that we could probably have children released from detention earlier and placed on electronic monitor. It's hard for me and he does the claims, so he may know that better.
I'm Jeff Colman, our administrative assistant. I think for detention this past year, looking at the claims and such, I would say that we would see just from the circumstances of which those juveniles were detained, those would only have maybe saved maybe 10 to 15%, but you're looking at a $50,000, $60,000 budget, so that's good. As far as our care juvenile fund where the electronic monitoring comes out of, that's going to be just a flat out 65% savings. There may be variations in the amount of use, so I would, to be conservative, I'd say we should save at least 50% of that fund. So, I think it would be benefit, both, in both funds, we should be season savings next year.
So, the contracts will be a lot less expensive than we're paying for care and...
Yes.
...security and such now?
Yes.
Have a motion to approve this contract. Colin, you said you've already...
I have, I don't have any questions.
...reviewed and seen that it's safe for us to sign?
Yeah, works for us.
Second? Second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for all you do, Jenna.
Thank you. I'm trying to save cost as much as possible. It's a full-time job. Jane?
Jezette?
Do you have a copy of that for them to sign?
Yes, the contract?
Yes, the contract.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Warren, suit up.
Good morning.
Morning.
Last month, I sent out requests for quotes to remove log jams at the bridge on the river, Whitewater River on County Road 440 North, this bridge 91. And I sent out to three contractors, only got one response. And it was from Coon Landscaping and Excavating in the amount of $1,960, which I feel is reasonable for...
Okay.
What he's going to do is remove the log jams and the piers and banks, and move them down to a sandbar on the southwest corner of the bridge, so...
So they're not going to float down and mess up the Old Town Bridge? Don't want to have to move the same logs twice?
Well, I have to go to Fifth Street Bridge, that's the state.
Can we not take them clear out? I mean, to get them away from the river, or DNR won't let us do that, or...
I didn't really, that'd be extra cost.
I mean, clear up on the bank to make sure that they don't get back into the river?
I think they prefer that they put it at the bank, a protection for that bank, prevent erosion wherever we put it.
And that's what you're planning on doing?
Yeah.
Is putting it into the bank?
Yeah, right next to it, on the sandbar. It won't stop any big floods or anything, but it gets away from the bridge, is my objective, so... That's the only item I have, so I guess it needed okay for that.
And you're just going to do a transfer?
Yeah, I've got two other bridges that we just put in money for maintenance like this, and I'll transfer over...
Okay.
And take care of that amount.
I'll make a motion to approve the Coon's estimate. I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you, Warren. I see Paula, is she hiding someplace?
She is.
Okay.
She's behind Paul.
I'm trying to wake up. Good morning.
Good morning, Paul.
A while back, I posted a part-time job for our office, and finally found somebody that was well-suited. It's for the, someone to help out with the exchange program. And her name is Charmin Gabbard. She's, I don't know if anybody's familiar with her. She is, she helps with the Unchained Praises with the jail. She is incremental within getting the Brianna's Hope chapter established in Fayette County at Crosspoint Biker Church. She's really involved in addressing the addiction problem here in Connersville in Fayette County. I have a 144 for her, I just want to, I guess I should start with. It would be covered by a grant, completely by a grant.
She'll be working how many hours a week?
Eight, eight to 10 hours, I think, is what it covers.
Okay. Per week?
Yes.
Per play period?
Right, yeah, per week.
Okay.
It's...
For how long?
The grant is for the end of the year, and she knows that it's, if the grant's over, then that's as far as it goes. If it's not a renewed grant, then that's the end of it.
Okay. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
And welcome, Charmin aboard.
I will do that. Guys, have a good day. And we...
I've got Donna Schwager here, and I don't see her either. She hiding someplace?
I don't think so. I don't think she's here.
And I don't remember what she was talking, going to talk to you about, but I can't help you there. Diana Wright, well, we have email. In all business, new business is Diana.
The prosecutor's office had a grant become available to them. We're just asking permission to go ahead and apply for that grant. It will be for equipment for the drug task force.
Have a motion to approve.
I guess I should say there is no matching funds on this, it's 100%.
Okay.
Very good.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Back up to all business, if you don't mind.
Okay.
We didn't actually set a deadline for applications for number one director to come in, did we?
No, definitely.
I didn't know whether we wanted to establish a deadline today so that we could let the advisory board get started interviewing, or whether we wanted to take it another week before...
When's the advisory board meet?
Next Thursday.
Not this Thursday, but the next Thursday?
Second Thursday tomorrow, so... Jane, how, do you know how many applicants, applications we've had in there?
I would say four.
Four, yeah. I didn't know whether we wanted to set sometime like...
And they meet on the 14th?
Yes. Sometime before the 14th, so that I could present those to them at that meeting, or...
How about next Tuesday, the 12th?
As the deadline, the 12th?
Deadline for application, September 12th. I'll accept a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to make the deadline on the 12th of September.
Yes.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. Patron concerns. I'll move for them to approve the claims and paperwork.
I'll move for the, approve the claims and paperwork. Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Isn't very good, we didn't approve the minutes yet.
Oh, we didn't approve the minutes. They're on the agenda.
Motion to approve the minutes, as presented.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will adjourn this meeting and do signing all claims after adjournment.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Been moved and seconded?
We'll return for a public hearing at...
10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
Public hearing on the... Alquina to order. Do we have a motion? I have an ordinance here. Just going to get my reading glasses on, and I'll read for you. Comes down Bruce and Cynthia Howe, husband and wife, and petition Fayette County Board of Commissioners to vacate a public alley. Whereas Bruce and Cynthia Howe are the owners of real estate to wit. Blue and Stout Place, Alquina lots number five and six, County Road 450 East in Connersville, Indiana. And Blue and Stout Place, Alquina lots number three and four, County Road on 25 South, Old State Road, and Hull 4540 East Alquina Road in Connersville, Indiana. Which are contiguous to the unimproved and abandoned alley that runs southeast from South Harrell Street and between to Alquina Road and Jefferson Avenue, in turns at Ryanangle to run perpendicular into Jefferson Avenue, and between South Harrell Street and South Mill Street in Fayette County, Indiana. Is that the correct...
Yes.
...description?
You got all that, didn't you?
I just followed.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Whereas that the petitioners desire that the alley be closed, if the alley may be used for other purposes. Whereas all owners of property contiguous to the unimproved and abandoned alley have been notified of the petitioner's desire to vacate said alleyway. Now therefore, it is ordained by the Commissioners of Fayette County, Indiana, that after considering this petition and evidence presented at a public hearing thereafter, it is now therefore ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County, Indiana, that the alley running from South Harrell Street to Jefferson Street in Fayette County, Indiana, between lots five, six, seven, eight, nine, and Blue and Stout Place, is hereby vacated. And ownership there are reverse to owners of said lots equally to the center of said alley, subject to all existing utilities located in said alley, which said easement shall continue as is, passed ordain and established by the Board of Commissioners of Fayette County, Indiana, on this fifth day of September 2017. That's contingent of all, you guys make a motion then?
I'll move to the pretty much further.
Are there any dissenters in the crowd?
I'll second it. The utilities will remain?
Yes, I met with a representative from...
We have letters.
Duke Energy, and we made a agreement that he would be able to keep that easement. He asked him where the garage in the house was going to go, and this one go on opposite sides of that, so he'll have access to whatever they need.
Okay.
So we have letters on file, where you turned them in at the last meeting, I think. I need a motion to pass this ordinance. You made a motion and you seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good.
Sorry for all the work.
Oh, that's okay. We need to do, get it done. I do have a question.
What's that?
As far as having a land survey, will that be done by the county, or do I need to hire somebody to have that done?
I'd say it's probably he should do it, yeah. Be you, I think.
Okay.
Since it is... You can go down and check with the surveyor, but...
Go down and ask for Warren. He'll tell you whether he automatically does it, or if it has to be, if you have to hire somebody to do it, to get it added to your property, whatever the official...
I mean, I don't think, it always has been your property, right? It's just a right-of-way. It was, the alley was just a right-of-way, wasn't it?
Well, the alley was originally planted, but never used.
Yeah. So I imagine, talk to Warren, because I imagine the surveyor will actually take that off the books.
Yeah. Also, it'll have to come out.
As a, as a right-of-way. I don't think there'll be any private surveying that'll have to be done, because...
Now, will that add to their property tax?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It'll go back on the property tax rolls as well. But I think that'll all be handled through Warren, but make sure you go down and ask him for sure.
Okay.
I think it's split. Do you own the property on both sides of the alley? Or does somebody else?
One I do, the other one I don't. The one that runs from Jefferson up to Alquina Road...
Okay.
Is shared with another neighbor. And the one, the half of the one that runs from Harrell to Mill Street belongs to me, and the other half belongs to my neighbor in Kenny Smith.
So that will increase their property by however many feet it is?
Right.
Yeah.
And that'd be added to their tax?
Because if it was done correctly, there should be a certain amount that is exempted off...
Right.
Of your property record card, if it was done correctly. And that exemption will go back on, since the alley's been abandoned then.
Yeah, well, just whatever line, just meet in the middle.
Yeah, yeah. If it was done correctly.
I thought it would go to the other guy.
If it was done correctly. I've seen, like, our, my road, for some odd reason, they widened it on one side, so my property line's not in the center of the road anymore. So, you know, I know it's done, it has been done, but... So I check with Warren, because I don't, I don't think there'll be any private cost involved for you. I don't think. Because it's, that property belonged to you anyway. It's already on your property record card. It's just...
Well, it is, well, it depends on, well, like I said, I know if, when I look on the beacon of the GIS system, it still shows it, but I'm not sure if it's on the property lines or not.
Okay, all right. Well, check with, check with Warren, he can probably tell you better.
Do you know where his office is?
Yes.
You spent a lot of time there.
Are we going to copy of that?
Now, will that, will that actually be sent to all the property owners that are involved?
I've got 30 addresses.
Why don't we do that? And then that way, everybody's familiar with what the ordinance reads, and they won't have any excuse for not knowing...
What's the number on that?
That it happened.
2502.
What's on this? I find the right copy, didn't I?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought you said this one didn't have a copy. This doesn't have autographs on it, but... There you go.
I'm going to close the hearing. Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you very much for your patience.